Are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Good morning. At this time, we will call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, January the 11th. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer is here. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klickum.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Illett.
Here. All are present. We do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it is January and it is winter time. I hope you all had safe travel to the meeting this morning. I got hung up on I-35, a big accident on 119th and I-35, so I spent a little time trying to get over into the center lane and continued to make progress. If you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off so as not to interfere with our electronic communications. I do have one presentation to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm not sure Henry Lyons is here this morning with us to receive this proclamation, so I'll just make note and make sure Mr. Lyons receives it. It's a proclamation noting and recognizing Martin Luther King holiday, which is Monday the 15th. And Mr. Lyons, for the last 14 years, along with other organizations, has sponsored a legacy dinner and program, which this year will be held at the Marriott on Monday, 5:30. Dinner begins at 6:00 p.m. And it's an effort to recognize young people in the community, as well as raise funds for some scholarships to support those young people. 2018 is the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Martin Luther King. So there are several special programs that are going on around the community. One of them was last Sunday afternoon at the Johnson County Community College, a program put together by Ms. Avery. And with the cooperation of the Johnson County Community College, it was an outstanding program and remembrance of the life and legacy of Martin Luther King. So the proclamation will be presented to Mr. Lyons in recognition of the program that will occur Monday evening. And Mr. Ashcraft, there are a couple of other community programs, I think, scheduled in honor of Martin Luther King. Would you want to speak to those at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The City of Olathe is also having its 18th Annual Martin Luther King Celebration titled "A View from the Mountain," and it will be held at the Bell Cultural Center on the MNU campus this Sunday at 3 o'clock, from about 3 to 5. And then also on Tuesday morning, the College Church of De Nastre at MNU is going to have a celebration. I believe it's their sixth year of recognizing Dr. King. It's going to be at 9:30 a.m. That's also the first day for students to be back in school, so it's always well-attended and it's a good program, too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, I should note that Monday the 15th, the county offices will be closed in recognition and participation in that national holiday remembering Dr. King. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to speak to an issue which does not later appear on the agenda, would invite you to the podium. State your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Is there anyone who would like to participate in the public comment portion of our agenda? There being no one to be heard, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do not have any notes for the record this morning, so we'll turn to our consent agenda.
Item number one, consider authorizing the acceptance of $222,800 by the Sheriff's Office in grant funds from the FY 2017 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction CEVR program from the National Institute of Justice to maintain one DNA forensics analysis with one-year salary and purchase new DNA mixture software from NICH Vision in an amount not to exceed $120,800 as an exception to competition for purchasing policy 110.180. Item number two, consider authorizing the acceptance of $232,992 by the Sheriff's Office in grant funds from the FY 2017 Paul Coverdale Forensic Science Improvement Grants Program, award 2017-CD-BX-0056 from the National Institute of Justice for the funding of overtime to reduce casework backlog in the latent prints section of the criminalistics laboratory and for the purchase of IBIS Brass Trax ballistics database acquisition station for ultraelectronics forensic technology in an amount not to exceed $141,000 as an exception to competition for purchasing policy 110.180. And item number three, consider authorizing the acceptance of $206,231 by the Sheriff's Office in grant funds from the FY 2017 Forensics DNA Laboratory Efficiency Improvement and Capacity Enhancement Program from the National Institute of Justice and the addition of a grant-funded DNA forensics technician position.
Is there any commissioner who would like to have an item considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? If not, it's back for the commission. A motion would be in order. Mr. Osterhaus?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving to the acts and agenda, item number four.
Consider approving the December 21, 2017 business session minutes.
Mr. Klickum was absent. Do I hear a motion? Mr. Osterhaus?
I move that we approve the December 21, 2017 business session minutes.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the December 21 business session minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klickum.
Stand.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number five.
Resolution number 001-18, consider City of Overland Park application number REZ-2017-109, request for rezoning of about 15 acres from RR-J Rural Residential District, Johnson County, and R-1 Single Family Residential District to R-1 Single Family Residential District to allow expansion of an existing single-family subdivision in the vicinity of the northeast corner of 159th Street and Quavero Road.
Ms. Greeley.
Good morning, Paul Greeley with the Planning Department. This is a City of Overland Park application that's within one mile of the Executive Airport, so it comes to you per state law for final, for county decision. It's a rezoning to a single-family residential, which is consistent with the area. On the screen is a picture of the area, and the bottom picture shows the existing Willshire by the Lake residential subdivision pattern. And next to that is the rezoning area, which will just be an expansion to what's there now. So it's consistent with the development patterns of the area. It's consistent with what is expected by the airport planning. The Airport Commission held a public hearing on this, and they and staff both recommend approval.
Just clarification. The reason this is before us is because it's proximity to Johnson County Executive Airport. Is that right?
Correct.
And the Planning Commission, as well as the Airport Commission, approve this?
Doesn't go to our Planning Commission. It goes to the Airport Commission.
The City Planning Commission.
The City Planning Commission and the City Council have approved it, yes.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Drew, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there really any questions or comments from neighbors? And I'm going to assume that Quavero will be improved either directly or indirectly related to this.
So at the Airport Commission meeting, there were no neighbors, although we did notify them through the normal process. I'm not sure about at the city process. And the city representative that is here today acknowledges that Quavero will have some improvements to it as part of this project.
Oh, well, it just looks like it would almost have to, but that's not directly related to this process. That's...
That's not something the county and the airport compatibility plan would look at, so...
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Allen.
Paul, I know this probably be more of a city issue. Is there any type of documentation in those lots or sold that they're in an airport flight zone or within an airport? Someone moved to the community and frankly, maybe didn't see any planes or whatever, and they move in and all of a sudden they see some planes flying over. Is there any way to maybe potentially protect them?
Well, that is a county issue, and that is something that we look at more so than maybe the city does, although the city certainly cooperates with this. So what we ask for is an affidavit of interest, which is a notification that's filed with the property, so that if property owners are looking at their title work, they will see that in the chain of title and receive notice of the airport operations, aircraft operations that...
That's plotted or whatever that... Okay.
So it's part of this process. So when we come back later as well with the plat, we'll actually have that memorialized as part of the plat.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, there being no one to be heard, it's back for the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Klickum?
I move that the resolution number 001-18 be adopted, approving the City of Overland Park application number REZ-2017-109, requesting for rezoning of about 15 acres from RR-J Rural Residential District, Johnson County, and R-1 Single Family Residential District to R-1 Single Family Residential District to allow expansion of Willshire by the Lake, by the Lake, single-family subdivision in the vicinity of the northeast corner of 159th Street and Quavero Road, which is located within one mile of the Johnson County Executive Airport for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and the application by the City of Overland Park in regards to the request for rezoning in the area of the airport. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number six.
Resolution number 002-18, consider City of Olathe application number SU-17-007, renewal of a special use permit for an existing construction and demolition landfill at 23200 West 159th Street, Olathe, Kansas.
Ms. Greeley.
Paul Greeley, Planning Department. This is in the City of Olathe application and is also within one mile of the airport, of the New Century Airport, and it's a renewal of a special use permit for an existing construction demolition landfill. On the screen, you can see the location of the landfill circled in red, and then off to the left is the airport. This is an existing operation that's special use permit through the city, has expired, so they're going through the renewal process. It has been approved by the City Planning Commission, City Council. Airport Commission held a public hearing on this, and they and staff both recommend approval of this special use permit.
Questions of Mr. Greeley? Again, anyone? Excuse me, did you have a question?
Yes. Mr. Greeley, were there adjacent residents or constituents that showed up during, or did any activity from the public hearing session?
Not as part of the county's process. We did give notice, we did do that, but we didn't have any neighbors that showed up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, thank you. Are there any questions further? All right, Mr. Brown, a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve City of Olathe application number SU-17-007 for an existing construction and demolition landfill at 23200 West 159th Street for the reasons listed in this report and subject to the following stipulations. One, the subject property shall only be developed in compliance with the approved development plan, which is attached here, too, as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, and not for development at any other density, configuration, or use which shall be considered a new application, which shall be subject to and require the separate consideration and approval of the Board of County Commissioners. And number two, the recording of an affidavit of interest regarding the Johnson County New Century Airport in the chain of title on the subject property.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution and as recommended by the City of Olathe, as well as approved by the Airport Commission. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number seven, resolution numbers 003-18 and 004-18, and application numbers AUOX-PDP/FDP-3359 and AUOX-CU-3360. Consider a request from Stillwell Land Holdings LLC applicant and landowner for preliminary and final development plans for construction and use of self-storage units and a conditional use permit to allow the construction of an outdoor storage yard and for outdoor parking and storage of automobiles, recreational equipment, and recreational vehicles located at 20770 Metcalf Avenue.
Ms. Greeley.
Paul Greeley, Planning Department. On the screen is a location of this proposed development plan and conditional use permit for outdoor storage. It's located at 207th and Metcalf, southwest corner of the intersection. This has been through the public hearing process with the zoning board. They recommend approval of both applications with stipulations, and staff also supports the applications and available for questions.
Questions of Mr. Greeley? Anyone present who would like to speak to this issue? All right, there's no one to be heard. It's back for the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Klickum?
I move to adopt resolution number 003-18, approving preliminary and final development plans for construction and use of self-storage units, plus a waiver from the minimum infrastructure requirements to allow Metcalf Avenue to exist as currently constructed without additional improvements for the reasons and subjects to the stipulations set forth within the resolution. I further move to adopt resolution number 004-18, approving a conditional use permit for the construction of an outdoor storage yard and for outdoor parking and storage of automobiles, recreation equipment, and recreational vehicles for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth within the resolution.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution, the application in regards to the conditional use permit, as recommended by the zoning staff, as well as the zoning board. Any further questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klickum.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Illett.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items?
No, sir.
All right, turning to reports and communications. Ms. Postock Ferguson?
Chairman and commissioners, there's no report in your packet, but you were talking about the celebrations for Martin Luther King Jr. I wanted to add some about the parks and library, and this was in JoCo Magazine that everyone got this week or last week. So the parks through the museum is offering a series now through February called Hidden Stories from Johnson County's African-American Community, and it's free to the public at the Johnson County Arts and Heritage Center. And more information is on our website. And then also, the library is doing a series called Then and Now, and that's through April as well, and information is on our website if you go to jocomgov.org backslash JoCoMag. And that's it.
Thank you. Legislative update. Cindy Green?
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Green with County Manager's Office. It is that time of year where we have kicked off the legislative session in Topeka on Monday. They were starting fast and furious, so you are going to start receiving a weekly report. This week, what you had in your packet was just the information we had received from the very beginning of the session of things we thought would be happening this week or this session from our lobbyists, but from this point forward, you'll be getting some updates. So I'm going to just touch on a couple of things I think are going to be hot this session, and then some things that have already happened this week. School finance probably is going to be number one out there that we hear the most about, and there's discussion in the budget already of how much money the governor set aside for that. I think there'll be some controversy probably over while the courts accept a five-year plan of balancing those dollars out that long, so I think that will be big. One of the other items that we're going to keep a close on is rural broadband, and we think, well, this is urban county. We don't deal with rural broadband. We actually have issues with this in our county that are major, impacts five of our cities that we are aware for sure, and then obviously impacts our rural areas, too. So we will continue to keep an eye on that. And then the property tax lid is, we think, will be getting some movement or at least some looks at in some committee hearings. So when they kicked off this week, the governor did do his state-of-the-state speech, and he talked about increasing the education funding by 500 million over the next five years. Again, when I talked about the five years, taking that out, does that then put them in a negative when you include inflation and stuff by the time you get five years out, or will it take more than that? They will be spending lots of time on that this session. The governor's budget was introduced into appropriations in the House and then in the Senate Ways and Means Committee, so they can start reviewing it. And when you look at these budgets, rarely is the governor's budget adopted as is, probably never. There's always some additions and deletions to it. So one of the big surprises that came out after his speech was the Senate Republicans, they called for a halt to implementing what they're calling Can Care 2.0, and it was signed by Senator Wegel, Senator Jim Denning, Senator Carolyn McGinn, and Senator Vicky Schmidt. And we look as this is beneficial to Johnson County if this gets delayed, that we'll have some options to look at this, because we have still been trying to look at how this impacts our county and such, so them not just approving the 2.0, we think, is very beneficial to us. So that was good news for us. It seemed like I had one other thing I wanted to talk to you. Oh, in regards to the budget, they are going to continue to sweep funds out of the Department of Transportation, which concerns us, that he is recommending that they take another 400 million out. So we'll be obviously up there watching that and keeping an eye on it and protesting that one, because we know how important roads are to infrastructure in our community and across the state. The other thing he did not recommend in his budget is any pay raises for the judicial branch, and that has been requested in the past by 20 million dollars, so we will be following that. And then for capers, they're going to propose an additional 18.1 million for the remainder of the fiscal year, and then 30.8 million for the next fiscal year, and this is basically just to cover the pay increases that teachers have received, that we'll need to be matching that, because it's a match in regards to their salaries for their capers.
That's the state's contribution.
Yeah, that's the state's contribution, not ours. Yeah, this did not impact ours. This is coming out of the state. And then in the healthcare portion of the budget bill, he had recommended spending another 22 million in the upcoming fiscal year to restore the 4.4% Medicaid cut that was made to Can Care last year, and then it would be another 17 million in the nursing home payments, so... And I did make a visit to Topeka yesterday. I just couldn't quite stay away when it's that first week of the session, and had several great meetings with some senators and representatives already talking about what can we be doing in regards to the tax lid and the impact on the cities and counties. So this is not an issue that's gone away, because it was implemented this year. We are still going to have some strong focus on that. And then we also had some movement in regards to a bill that's in one of our top priorities with the election commissioner, and this is in regards to their budget being approved by you and them having to follow our personnel policies. The Kansas Association of Counties is having a bill introduced. We hope to get it in next week. They're getting it to the revisers right now, and this was a bill that we came to agreement with three of the other large counties that are impacted by this, and that we came to agreement of how we would want to handle that this year. So we feel that's great news, that we're this quick into the session and getting some movement on that with the help of the counties and bringing our lobbyists in to help us, too. So for now, I will stand for questions and look forward to a great session of giving you updates this year.
Cindy, thank you very much. Would you comment? I understand there was conversation, or maybe there was something introduced in regards to home rule for counties?
Yes, there was a bill that was introduced for home rule, and I have not discovered who actually introduced that this year, but they're expecting to have hearings next Tuesday in the House on that, and this would take a vote, two-thirds voted the Senate and the House, and then also go to a vote of the people.
It would have to be a constitutional amendment.
It'd be a constitutional amendment, so we will...
As I recall, it's similar to what the Home Rule Authority is, the cities also operate under, so...
Correct.
We'll be communicating support for that effort, so...
Yes, we will.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, Ms. Green. Sorry. This is the first report we've received from Federico Consulting, I believe, and I appreciate it very much. And I wanted to ask for clarification, and if you'd like to research this more, that's fine, but under school finance, the third paragraph, there's a statement that says some individuals citing Speaker Reichman and Attorney General Schmidt that suggests that they want to place a constitutional amendment that would strip the Supreme Court's power to interpret the definition of suitable. And I just, I was wanting to get some clarification, because I've heard Attorney General Schmidt speak on this, and I've actually had several conversations with Mr. Reichman, and what I was hearing from them was seeking a change in the law to help better define what suitable was and not try to strip the Supreme Court of anything. It's just, it's just kind of, is there an implication here when you use a term like "strip"? What are they trying to tell us?
My understanding is that they were trying to remove this from the Constitution, because that's where this word "suitable" is, so that that would be legislation, again, that would have to be passed by the House and Senate, signed by the governor, and then go to the vote of the people in Kansas, to have this word "suitable" removed to help reduce the number of lawsuits.
Okay, no, I understand that part, but it's the implication of stripping the Supreme Court of the power to interpret.
Oh, I see.
I just, it seemed like it's more of an attack on the Supreme Court than a clarification of the term, and I just was wondering if there was something else in that communication that I just wasn't following.
I will get further information for you, but...
Thank you.
This is all I have at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Cindy, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Turning to, at this point, to commission comments. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Cindy stated, legislative session began on Monday. I went to Topeka and saw the, I saw the process begin. Let's see, I also, on Sunday, attended the MLK event, Martin Luther King event, Junior event, at Johnson County Community College with several folks that I share the dais with, and it was well done. It was extremely well done. And then finally, be safe out there.
Okay. Mr. Osterhaus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll echo all the comments that were made this morning on the Martin Luther King Junior celebration at Juco. It was fantastic presentation put together, and a lot of the youth were involved as well, which I thought was really great. Also had a chance to have lunch yesterday with some of the people from United Dartmouth who are sponsoring our transportation program for our mental health, some of our mental health clients. It's been a huge success, and they're looking to expand that and use Johnson County as the prototype for the rest of the country, so some really great stuff to be proud of there in the mental health realm.
Very good. Mr. Allen?
I attended the same luncheon with Commissioner Clickum and Maury Thompson also. Very, very good program.
Okay, Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little bit of an elaboration, because I wanted to also thank Jill Geller and the Parks Department and Sean Castley with the library, and also county staff for the work they did and the support they did for this Martin Luther King event. Mr. Brown, I agree with what you said, but I mean, it was...
Amazing.
It was an amazing, an amazing program, and I told Vivian Avery, who was the mistress of ceremony, I suppose, I mean, it was, and I mean this in a positive way, I mean, it was almost Hollywood. I mean, it was, it was so well done and so many different levels, and you did a great job, Mr. Chairman, but I just, I mean, that's the best I've ever seen of a local program for Martin Luther King, and so...
It was well done.
It was, it was absolutely outstanding.
Ms. Clickum.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo the comments made about the luncheon we had with United Healthcare, but I'd like to also point out as positive notes that Commissioner Osterhaus, Commissioner Allen have said, so far, we've provided 28,000 trips on the service as a result of this pilot program, and it's just showing that, you know, we're using transportation to help solve a few other problems. A bulk of the transportation has been focused on work-school rides, which is kind of a promotion of what this county has been trying to do as far as its transportation program is to increase the access to these events. So Maury and your team, I congratulate you. We also did receive pretty much the impression from United Health yesterday during our lunch that this is not a short-term commitment with us or a partnership. This is going to be a long-term partnership, and they see that this type of solution in transportation can help deal with some of the other issues that they're dealing with. So I did want to put a little more attention on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we're visiting, most of us are visiting about Martin Luther King Day and week and celebration next Monday evening, as Chair Ed mentioned, the Monday night's dinner that Mr. Lyons sponsors yearly, one of our own is going to receive a legacy award, and that would be our Chair, Chair Illet. So congratulations to Ed, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. A couple of items. Number one, at our study session last week, we had a conversation about sending out informal requests for information from organizations that might be interested in being involved in our national search effort, and we were talking about January 18th as being the cutoff date. In visiting with HR yesterday, my suggestion is that we extend that cutoff date to February 1st. I think they sent out something like 30 individual requests for preliminary information as of yesterday. I think they had four back, and, or, excuse me, eight of them responded, four were not interested, and four were interested. So in looking at the schedule, unless there's opposition, HR will inform all of them that they have until February 1st to respond, so that'll give them a couple more weeks. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, staff did preliminary schedule that we saw last week, and I thought the timing of it was really pretty aggressive. So I don't have a problem with February 1st. I think we should pursue this effort, but I, and I'd like to see it come to a successful resolution sooner rather than later, but I'm not anxious to have an artificial deadline just to force it to happen, so February 1st works fine with me.
Okay, and then we do have a study session scheduled this afternoon to begin at 10:30 a.m. in Room 202204, and that will be to review the contents of the citizen survey, which will be going out. Also, there is, was originally scheduled a ribbon-cutting at Workforce Development Facility, and we need to double-check the weather and double-check with Workforce Development to see if that's still effective. If the weather is no better than it's supposed to be predicted, we may not want to venture out, but anyway, if staff will do a double-check maybe about 11 o'clock or so and let us know. Appreciate it. We do not have a request for executive session, so we are adjourned. We'll take a short break and come back for agenda review. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.